And we have to do our prayer tonight Apostle Von Newsom from Impact Church. So Apostle Newsom, if you'll come up and do the prayer, then we'll stand up and do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody would please stand. How are you tonight?
I'm well.
All good, great.
Good evening for y'all. If I had you here, thank you, thank you for having me. We just appreciate the opportunity. Let us pray tonight. Father, we thank you this afternoon and this evening for the opportunity to come and just open up this session. We ask your blessings tonight with this council. Over everything that will be addressed tonight, we pray that you give us wisdom to speak, or give wisdom to speak, and give us even the ability to hear those things that are necessary to make decisions that will be for the betterment of our community. Now, we just ask your blessings. We acknowledge you tonight in this setting, and as your word says, if we acknowledge you in all of our ways, you will direct us. Now, we thank you for your blessing and your grace. It's in Jesus' name we pray, and we say amen.
Amen. Thank you Apostle. We have some scouts from Troop 14 here with us, and they're gonna come up and help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. How are y'all tonight? Come on right up here, and we'll face the flag, and you can start the Pledge of Allegiance for us, okay? Alright.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young man. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you said you had a form to sign, so before you leave, you get that, the Melissa still help you with it.
I was a member of Troop 14, 200 years.
We're gonna do the roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Burton Bosworth.
President.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mann.
Yep.
Councilmember Echol.
We're all here. We have the approval of the minutes from May 8th, May 15th, special meeting, May 15th, and special meeting, May 22nd for adoption.
I make a motion that we adopt minutes from the regular meeting of May 8th, regular meeting of May 15th, special meeting of May 15th, and special meeting of May 22nd.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us, everybody raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries. So, we're gonna back up just a minute. We didn't finish, any of you that may have an agenda, we didn't finish our work session, and there's two items on our work sessions that we have to finish tonight. So, we're gonna back up to our work session, and the first item we're gonna do is Item H, which is the U.S. Marshal Service Task Force.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
To be brief, it's my desire to assign an officer who's currently with the Police Department to the U.S. Marshal Fugitive Task Force. The purpose of the Regional Fugitive Task Force is to combine the effort of federal, state, local law enforcement agencies to locate and apprehend the most dangerous fugitives and assist in high-profile investigations. This law will provide the goals of the Police Department with resources to not only apprehend our most violent offenders, but also to fight man-armed crime during homicide investigations. Any questions?
Any questions? Alright, thanks Chief West. And then next, we have the street assessment discussion.
We have Humphrey Street coming up tonight on the consent agenda for a bid award, and I think one of the other council meetings was discussed whether we were gonna do assessments for that. Well, I've spoken with the city attorney, as well as our finance director, and we have two general statutes that cover petitions. One of them is General Statute 168-217. A city shall have no power to levy special assessments for street or sidewalk improvements unless it receives a petition for the improvement, signed by at least the majority in the number of owners of property to be assessed. So, in the case where we're paving these unpaved streets, we don't have any assessment ability for those.
And I guess it's back to the Mayor and Council. We have assessed, we've done it by petition, you've been back and forth. I'm okay if you make a change and don't assess, it's just one of those things that we needed you to tell us that you don't wanna assess for street paving. We've had the discussion, there've been some that say we should, there've been some that say we shouldn't, but we need to know, does the council want us to assess? And if you do, then what we've done with Humphrey Street, we can't award. If you don't wanna assess, then you can't award Humphrey Street, and that's why Marty needed to be able to talk through that with you.
And the other, I wanna point out, in our Code of Ordinances, Chapter 98, Point 25, paving to be done by the city, approval required, says paving of all public streets shall be done by the city as provided by the city charter and state statutes. All paving done by the city shall be executed and financed as here and after set forth. Paving the streets and sidewalks shall be approved in one of two categories. The first is after receiving a petition signed by more than 50% of the property owners representing more than 50% of property owned, or upon declaration by city council that the paving is in the interest of public benefit.
What's your pleasure here?
I think we need to refer this back to the next meeting for the work session for further discussion.
But if you do that, you can't award the bid.
Yeah. Would be the issue with that.
I think we discussed in the past that we didn't wanna assess people.
I mean, I'm personally saying that Humphrey Street needs to be paved, and I don't think, as long as it would take to get those people to do that, we might not get it paved. So, I mean, I would be in favor of moving forward with the contract and having no assessment would be my opinion.
I make a motion that we move forward on the bidding process for Humphrey Street.
I second.
With no assessment.
No assessment.
Alright, I'm gonna second. Any discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries, and you're gonna move forward with the paving. Alright, so that's all we had on the work session that we have to do tonight, is that correct? We can move everything else to our next meeting?
Yes, sir. We can do anything else you'd wanna do, but that's all I felt like you had to do.
Okay, well, that's all we have to do, we'll move on so we can get through with our agenda tonight. The next, we have presentations, we have none. Our next is public hearings, we have none. Our next is my favorite time of the night, it's our public comment period time. So, anybody can come speak, if you will give the clerk your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. How are you, Mr. Jeanette?
Henry Jeanette, 52 North Jackson Street. You've been in my car in your south for years. Thank you, ma'am.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing wonderful because you're here. We're glad to see all of you tonight. Everybody's bright-eyed and enjoying the meeting. In behalf of all the fine, clean, Christian people who live in Goldsboro and wanna keep this a safe and a clean city, we, the clean Christian people, do hereby oppose Sabbath morning, Sunday morning, Sunday morning sale of alcoholic beverages, because it's a threat to the church, it's a disgrace to the community, and I think the city of Goldsboro's in bad shape if they can't do without tax revenue for two hours. Thank you for your vote against it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Good evening. If you will give the clerk your name and address, please.
My name is Anna White. I live at 1925 Pine Month Circle, right here in Goldsboro, and I attend Adamsville Baptist Church, which is right here on Berkeley Boulevard. Our city is the home of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, where people from all over the United States and the world pass through us. I feel serving alcohol at 10 o'clock a.m. on Sunday morning will be a bad influence on the young people and should be voted down. I want our city to be known for the safety and friendly people that we have here. If we have our people sitting in a bar at 10 a.m. on Sunday morning, they are missing an opportunity to attend one of our many churches here in the city. This proposal will most likely lead to more drunk driving, which will keep our policemen busier than ever, and I feel like they will also add additional crime. The residents and other programs are working very hard to promote Wayne County and get facilities here like the soccer. We're trying to get a soccer field to bring in families from all over the state and other states. That would bring revenue, that would bring revenue into our hotels, it would bring revenue to our restaurants. I agree with this gentleman, I do not think we need to serve alcohol at 10 o'clock in the morning. I appreciate you all listening to me, but again, vote no on this proposal.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak?
My name is James Carter, 114 Barton Avenue, Goldsboro.
Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, sir.
Uh, I grew up here in Goldsboro, been here all my life. My grandmother and grandfather run a store on Slocom Street. I could look out the front door and see the ballpark, see the Goldsboro go up there and catch balls. When they knocked them over, they're batting practice, I'd get in free to get the balls. But that's what I'm looking at. The sale that y'all are talking about approving or disapproving, I think is bad. I go to First Baptist Church, it's the oldest church in Wayne County. It's a hundred, over 150 years old. I'm the third generation of that church. I've been a deacon, I'm an elder, both. I oppose of this. Everybody's looking at you. You have one person, one person only, that is looking at you harder and harder than we are. It's the man upstairs. You do not need to approve this. The people here downtown says it would bring revenue to them. If they can't get along with what they're making right now, they don't need to be in business. So, I applaud you to vote no on this thing. Definitely, use your heart. Do what the man tells you to do. It's wrong to do this. I've never took a drink in my life, and I'm proud of it. They say drinking will hurt you, it will. I've seen friends of mine killed on account of drinking. Don't drink and drive. You drink the beer right here on Center Street, and the people get in the car and they drive. They're not obeyed by the law, and if you vote yes on this, you're not obeyed by the law. You're not obeyed by God's law. He said work seven, he made it seven days, and the sixth, seventh day, he rested, and that's what we're supposed to do, not sell liquor. One more thing. I think I have time. I looked on TV two weeks ago, and a man, he said he approved it, he said that would give him and his friends more time to go drink before they went to church. What does that tell of that man? He's not a Christian.
I don't know, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to speak next? Yes, sir.
Dustin Pike, 247 Cleveland, Princeton, North Carolina.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So, for those that don't know me, my name's Dustin. I own Tobacco and Hops in downtown Goldsboro. I'm also the president of the Downtown Goldsboro Merchants Association. In relation to the brunch bill, we did survey our members. We had 24 responses. Seventy-one percent of our downtown merchants are in favor of the brunch bill. Twenty percent were not in support of the brunch bill, and nine percent had no opinion. The merchants feel that the brunch bill will bring new hospitality, food and entertainment businesses to Goldsboro. We also feel that we need to pass this to remain competitive with our neighbors. Kinston, Lenore County, Smithfield, New Bern have all passed the brunch bill. We also feel that with it happening widely across the state, that we need to do this to remain competitive and to continue attract not only businesses, as well as customers. There was a comment in the work session about businesses not being open from 10 a.m. to noon now. The reason that is, is because they cannot generate revenue during that time because of the current laws. So, like I said, the merchants association do support the passage of the brunch bill and do feel it will benefit us in downtown.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Kate Jones, 1550 Clarition Road.
How are you tonight?
Fine, thank you. How are y'all? I appreciate you letting me speak. I don't think you should change it, but I don't think they should be drinking at all. I've seen too many children go home without their parents because their parents were alcoholics, and too many children today can't be with their parents because of their drinking. And if they drink on Saturday night late, and then they want to continue at 10 o'clock Sunday morning, where's their distance there? They should be home with their parents during that time. And I just don't think you should change it, in reverence the Lord's Day, and I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a good night. Samms.
Hi there. How are you, young man? Seventeen O. A. South John Street. Temperate of 1,090, Smoberg.
I have a different topic.
Okay, Mr. Don, you go ahead.
I have a question, but before I ask the question, I have to tell you this. On June 26th, I was going to work, 5:30 in the morning, there was a dead animal in the road. Also, two, at least for two weeks prior to that, there was a triangular-shaped piece of particle board on the corner on the intersection of George and Grantham Street, for at least two weeks. Now, on the 28th of June, I called the sanitation department and asked if they would kindly get, remove both items. When I went home that afternoon, they were both gone. Now, my question is, why did it take a city citizen to have that done? I'm sure there's plenty of city vehicles passing both streets, and nothing was done. That's the question that I have.
All I can tell you is, I feel your pain, we feel your pain. They, you know, people just see different things. We say all the time, we have 450 employees, we ought to have 900 eyes all over the city all the time, and it doesn't matter whose it is or what it is, if it's a problem, we ought to be fixing it. We do some things really good, some things we're not as good at, and we're trying to get better, we're trying to be more proactive and not reactive, but we are reactive on a lot of things. But I promise you, we are looking and we are trying our best to clean the city up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have a good night.
You too, sir.
Thank you, Don.
Would anybody else like to speak? Mr. Culver.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Here to talk about two things. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Williams and Mayor Chuck Allen for coming out today at Goldsboro High. Kids really enjoyed it. We're gonna do the same thing on the 28th of August at Dillard Middle School, so anybody is invited to come and kind of cheer the kids on. The first two pieces of paper that I gave you, as you recall, I came to you back in May, late May, early June, and I talked about a potential curfew. Well, I'm back again, because I'd like you guys to really consider putting it on your agenda to take a look at it. And what you have in front of you is just kind of some crime statistics that I kind of took the time to go back through the news august. I know that the police department probably has more detailed information, but I just took June, July, and August. And as you can see, in June, just what was reported by the news august, there were 12 incidents. A woman injured after knife or stone in the chest, man in serious condition after shooting, gunman robbed gas station, dog shot at during break-in, shots fired, police seek information, and so on. Same thing when you take a look at July, went down a little bit, there were eight incidents. And then, just, we just started the new month in August, and there's already been three incidents. And again, I proposed a curfew, and listening to the shot spotter, he kind of just solidified some of the things that I thought was important, because he said the issue with the shots fired are Friday, Saturday, Sunday, between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00 p.m. So, one of the things that I proposed in the summer was that we, between those hours, we impose a curfew. And I know that school is getting ready to start back, and again, the summer is over, but again, it would be good if we had a weekend curfew. And all I'm saying is that, just take a look at it, to be able to see if that would kind of curb the violence. We're not gonna stop it, because people are gonna do the things that they wanna do. But I think that if you take a look at some of the 17 and 16-year-olds that are out there committing the crimes, it proves that it's happening during those times. So, particularly on the weekends, since school is getting ready to start again, to me, that will be a great thing to do. And then I also kind of gave you guys, on our mentoring program, 100-fold, it has a brochure, and then it also has an application, as the mayor said, and was briefed by the Y. We're gonna be primarily dealing with Dillard Middle School, so I just wanted to make you aware that there is another program, but it's specifically gonna be working with the Dillard Middle Schools, okay? So, again, I'm just hoping that you guys take the time, I'll be working with the chief as a working group to look at some other issues, but I would at least like you guys to take the time to look at that in your business section, to see if it would be feasible to stop some of the violence around here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? I thought I was gonna get by without you, Ms. Stanley, I was kinda getting excited up here.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everybody. In case you lucky people don't know, I'm Yvonne Stanley. We had a little incident down by way this past weekend. Does anybody know what it was?
Yes, ma'am, I've heard about it.
How many more deaths are we gonna have to have down at Bosco Beach before y'all do something? Here's a stack of papers, I'll be glad to show anybody who wants to look at it. People dying down there, and it's not one, two, three, or four, it's past 10 plus more. You know, this man went into bushes when he got killed, like Mr. Pierce says. They're hiding in the bushes. They ain't hiding in the bushes, they're driving those four-wheelers after 11 o'clock at night. And if any of you are there, Mr. Acock, you see what I'm talking about. Any of you go down there after 11 o'clock, you'll see what I see. At 2:35 served out Friday morning, it was like a bunch of bees in front of my house. The night they had that Coke IV thing down there, Ms. Pierce, the oldest wife, said, "If you have any problem, give me a call," she gives me her phone number. I called her, she calls me back at midnight. She said, "I'll take care of the problem." She didn't do nothing. When I called the sheriff's department, I had three sheriffs car in my yard at 3:00 in the morning, with four deputy sheriffs out there. Now, they had been down the street giving out DWIs, and, which I didn't know. When they called, I said, "Could y'all please call down to Bosco and ask them to send somebody up here to get those folks down to Bosco if they wanna ride?" This is 3:00 in the morning. They made a phone call down there, and answered to the deputy sheriff said, "They can't send us no help, because they got a bunch of drunks down there fighting, and it's a mess down there." I didn't get no help. People are dying, people are getting hurt. I saw in two-hour period the other day, on the weekend, four rescue squads went down there, three came out while I was cutting grass, and one was running red lights. Now, it's time you put on your big pants like Judge Jeanine says, and do something. You say, "Well, we're gonna move to ETJ." That ain't gonna help. Do we have to go to Raleigh and get a law passed that those people, when they're driving those ATVs, cannot be drinking? Our deputy sheriff see them down there drinking openly, and they're running ATVs. You figure it out what's happening, they're getting killed, and y'all got blood on your hands, because they were supposed to stop running four-wheelers at 11 o'clock, and it was past 12 when the man got killed.
Yes, ma'am.
Do something.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Councilmembers, I just wanna address y'all with the brunch bill. I wanna talk about some stuff that was said in the working session earlier. Councilman Acock, if you were taking phone, or if I knew you were taking phone calls, I wanted to make sure that you had plenty of them. Councilman Foster, as far as Sunday sales, you were talking about, you didn't wanna see any issues that came up at corner stores, or convenience stores, C-stores in general. I'm wondering what the current ordinance we have, what problem that is fixing on Sunday that we don't have the rest of the week? Just so everybody knows, we have alcohol sales starting at 7:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday. So, what's the difference with Sunday?
You saying?
It's the Lord's Day, that's the difference. So, now this is an issue of religion. So, there are many Sabbaths, Sunday is not the only Sabbath, in the Jewish community, Friday evening through Saturday evening is the Sabbath. Hindus believe every day is a holy day. So, we are now, we're, we're making laws based on religion. I'll refer you to the First Amendment. In fact, I can quote the first sentence if you would like me to, "But Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion." This is absolutely unconstitutional. The Lord's Day has nothing to do with alcohol sales, at all.
Thank you, thank you, Father. I have a quick question for you, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
When, you, you own a bar, or you own anything down?
Yes, sir, I do. I own Goldsboro Breweries, located directly behind City Hall, and I have no intentions of changing my hours.
Okay. Quick question, when you applied for your ABC permit?
Yes, sir.
What were the hours?
What were the hours that the state allowed me?
Yes.
What were the hours?
On Sunday, what was the hours then?
It was noon.
Okay.
I opened in November last year, so it was noon.
So, at that time, you knew that those were those hours, you didn't know that it was gonna change or anything, and you were fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it shouldn't be that big of a problem now, if you were okay with it then?
No, it shouldn't be, but it is.
Just asking.
It's limiting.
I was just asking. I was just asking.
I understand.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would say that I know some of your business folks and so forth, they're not knocking into one business or anything like that. Let's look back at the Blue Label Law. Now, it wasn't too many years ago that stores had stopped opening on Sundays. During the Blue Label Law, alcohol would never sold after 6:00 p.m. on Saturday. But now, it's requested that alcohol be sold early Sunday morning. The club just terminated, probably maybe about 5:00 o'clock that morning, going into Sunday morning. So, I strongly oppose the hour that presented. 12, 1:00, go for it. I know everybody don't go to church, everybody don't believe in God, but we still need to give respect, which respect is due. So, as for this alcohol thing there, I think it shouldn't be approved, not here in the county. People are already talking, there are too many bars down town, it's like it's a saloon. Now, the shophouses have more respect on Sunday than what they're being requested now. Some of them won't even sell nothing until after the hour. They would not sell. But this is a request there, you're getting off of a drug from Saturday, Saturday night into Sunday morning, then you start your drug right back over. Then you gotta go to work. Your mayor will go ahead and say, "Okay, it's legal for you to go and sell drugs on Sunday morning there, and nobody gonna be arrested." So, that's where it goes. So, we, I think we should just go and look at this, and the ones that, well, see what my constituents say about, before I cast a vote on this and that there. Believe you are there, believe that they do not want this either. So, that's all we're looking, looking forward to as for the alcohol thing, starting a problem. So that's all we're looking forward to as for the alcohol thing, starting a problem. Somebody go out there, sit around there, drink, then other things start developing. Somebody might wanna start shooting, or somebody, "Oh, you knocked my beer over." You just, "I just bought that shot there. I paid ten dollars for it." And you go, "Well, I'm sorry." Probably don't wanna hear it, then you got another friction going on. So let's let this remain asleep. And as far as the weekend there, this semester, we don't go over all over Facebook with this spike stuff. Folks are telling me that I had seen this, and well, the police were sitting across the street looking at it. I don't know whether it's true or not, but several folks had mentioned it. Now, what are we gonna do about this game? Probably game related. I'll say it's maybe game related, or whatever world that has something to do with it, dance, or whatever the case may be. It's a shame that we got to go through this here, over and over. People talk, "Well, that's why I don't come out at a certain hour and go to a different place at a certain time because I don't know who to trust." I just don't know who to trust. It put a lot of fear in older folk. Well, I hate to say it's the millennial folk, but hey, we need to do something. If we need to get martial law here, so be it. If you had to shut it down on a certain week there for a certain age and stuff there, so be it. It'd be done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Babbitt. Anybody else wanna speak?
Good evening, sir.
Counsel?
How are you tonight?
I'll tell you the truth, it'll make you cry.
I got faith in you.
I'm a found objects artist. I look for things that folks no longer want or no longer need, and I try to make something out of it. And I worked on a model of a piece I'd like to do for the city of Goldsboro. This is a one-quarter model of the piece that I'd be interested in doing for the city. It's made of silver-plated, flattened-out silver-plated spoons. Imagine what that would look like, ten times larger. The detail in the centerpiece would be much more involved. While you're looking at that, I'd also like to remind us that the streets of Goldsboro are still very littered, very, very, much too much. I've had the pleasure of living in several model cities in this country, and Goldsboro could easily be a model city, easily. It's up there on the southeast corner of this town. We've got a model Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Spits shine the city, just like Seymour Johnson does. They make this a model city. Goldsboro would be a beautiful little city. Thank you.
I will tell you this, and you know this. We do have people picking up litter all the time. We haven't.
But that's not the problem, brother. The problem is people are putting down litter.
Don't tell me I get you.
The last time I was here, I suggested that the city should do a campaign that says, "Open windows of moving vehicles on the streets of Goldsboro is not the city's trash reception."
You got my support a hundred percent. But I do wanna say that, I will say that the problem is that we're going back in the same areas, and the same people are littering in the same areas. And I don't know how we do the cultural change to get people to realize it's not okay to litter. I mean, I don't know how you fix it. I mean, it's very disappointing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a private meeting with you someday.
Well, you call me anytime.
And I've got an idea for you, and I bet you it'll work.
Well, you tell Melissa, we'll do it. Okay? All right, bud. All right. Anybody else like to speak? You better talk fast if you wanna speak, 'cause I just feel as the public here. So we're done with public comment. We're gonna move to consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I know we approved the agenda prior to the meeting, but could we change from going to the consent agenda items to the items requiring individual action? And vote on that. I make a motion that we do. That way, most of these people, if they wanna leave, they've heard the vote that they wanted to hear.
If you get a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of changing around the agenda? Any opposed? All right. We're gonna move to items requiring individual action. And the only item we have requiring individual action tonight is the alcohol bill. So what's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the sale of alcohol from ten o'clock on Sunday with the accompanying ordinance that was discussed in the lunch session.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the bill, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries four to three. The bill is approved. All right. Now, we're gonna move back to consent agenda.
Item B, senior twelve, seventeen, back to our funeral home. The property is located on the north side of Royal Avenue between Audubon Avenue and Hummer Street. The applicant requesting a condition of use permit. McIntyre Funeral Home used to be on George Street during Hurricane Matthew. They moved, and they moved on to Royal Avenue and to the building that's shown on the photo. They came into our office and tried to get a sign permit, and we determined at that time that the funeral home was not permitted within that zone because of the zone neighborhood business. So therefore, they had to get a change of zone. So that's what they're requesting. We had to get a condition of use permit to be able to have the funeral home at that site. There's an existing five-thousand-six-est square-foot building on the site now. It's made of brick and there, and a metal building. There's an existing twenty-foot wide access drive. Landscaping meets requirements. So they need no additional landscaping. Their sidewalks are required, but they're wanting to pay the two-thousand-one-thirds dollars fee in lieu for that sidewalk. At their meeting held on July third, first, two thousand seventeen, the planning commission recommended approval of the request submitted by the site plan.
Any questions? All right. We'll move on to item C.
Okay. Item C is a subdivision plot. Currently, it's S-four, seventeen, Wood, Cerny, and Parrot. It's a two-lot limited subdivision plot. Currently, the property is one tract of land. They want to separate the property into two tracts. It's nine-point-two acres. Lot one will contain three-point-seventeen acres, and lot two will contain six-point-zero-four acres. It's owned resident R-sixteen. They're doing this, dividing the property into two lots to sell their family estate. The planning commission, at that meeting held on June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, recommends approval of the plot with a modification of the front yard's building setback from forty feet to twenty feet.
Any questions? All right. We'll move on to item D.
Item D is citing landscape plans for Meadowland Elementary School. The property is located on the south side of East I Street between Oak Forest Road and Malone Street. The new building to be constructed will contain forty-one classrooms and ninety-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet in area. They're also requesting a sixty-five-by-ninety-three mobile unit, which will contain six thousand, four-five square feet temporarily to be placed in a regor for temporary classrooms during construction. It will contain eight classrooms. They're proposing, they're requiring a total of one-forty spaces. They're showing two-hundred-and-twenty-three spaces on the site plan. This is the, excuse me, put it to the screen, I need to show you this. This is the site plan that was submitted. This is Ash Street that's shown here. This is the new parking area that they're using for the proposed school. Based on this design, they'll be able to have two cars come in at the same time, coming through parking lot, coming to this drop-off point here. Currently, they're proposing to leave the building from this site with a left turn and a right turn onto Ash Street. The bus park will be in this area here, coming off of Oak Forest Road. And two thousand nineteen, NCDOT. Two thousand nineteen, NCDOT is proposing to do some work on Ash Street. There'll be four-lane in Ash Street from Berkeley Boulevard to Saverny. And the proposed construction is stated for twenty-twenty-one. So at that point, if they do that, there're gonna be a center median in the middle of Ash Street, so they would not be able to make that left turn onto Ash Street. But that's in twenty-twenty-one. And we've talked to Giles at NCDOT, and they're wanting to contact them to see what they can do about that at this time.
Any questions?
I just, the only thing I worry about stacking up traffic on Ash Street is.
Well, with this, with the traffic pattern that they have, most of the stacking will be on-site. That's why this is basically designed like this. You're able to stack cars from this point here to this point here. And then there'll be a downturn lane, turn lane up, as we shown here.
And the buses coming Oak Forest, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so they're coming.
Buses will go on Oak Forest. So that design will get rid of some of the stacking on the Ash Street.
I wish we'd come up with a design for Eastern Wayne Middle School. Well, they've got Breenwood stacking out of there, too. That's what worries me, especially when we go four-lane. I'm certainly no traffic engineer.
And the last one is item E, site plan Thomas Road Elementary School. It's addition of a modular unit. As a reserve recently directed from the state, which mandate reduction in the number of students per classroom, the Wayne County Board of Education has not proposed replacement of an eighty-four long by six-foot-wide modular facility consisting of six individual classrooms. That will be located in the rear of the building. The planning commission recommended approval.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Item F is?
Mayor and council, Kay Scott was not feeling well this evening, so I've got her three items. If I can answer your questions, we'll approve them. If not, we can defer them. But her first item was item F, the sale of surplus real property. Two-oh-eight Whitfield Drive is recorded in the Wayne County Registry. In July, the city was offered made to the city for the said property. Mr. Chester Brown, the adjacent property owner, offered to pay the city a sum of a dollar to acquire this property. The city of Goldsboro acquired the property in nineteen seventy-three. The property's tax value is listed as a thousand dollars. And the recommendation is by motion to accept the offer of Mr. Chester Brown an amount of dollar and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute deed on behalf of the city of Goldsboro.
Everybody good with that? Any concerns? Okay.
Mayor and council, the next item, item G, sale of real property, five-hundred Creech Street and five-oh-two Creech Street, as recorded in the Wayne County Registry. June thirtieth, Willie Battle offered to pay the city of Goldsboro the sum of twenty-two-hundred dollars for five-hundred, two-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars for five-hundred Creech Street, and seventeen thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars for five-oh-two Creech Street, and made a bid deposit of nine-seventy-five, seventy-five cents at the time. The city of Goldsboro and the county of Wayne acquired this property in the summer in September two thousand and sixteen. The county commissioners at their July eighteenth meeting agreed to convey their share of this property to the city of Goldsboro with the stipulation that the city and the county share equally in the expenses. The property's tax value for both properties is thirty-nine thousand, one-ninety. An advertisement appeared in the Goldsboro News-Aregis on July sixth, two thousand and seventeen. The ten-day upset bid period expired on July fifteenth, with no counteroffers received after this bid. The attorney fees associated with transferring the deed will be paid by the buyer. The city and the county's portion from the sale of these properties would be nineteen thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars minus the expenses for advertising the properties. And the recommendation would be by motion to accept the offer from Mr. Willie Battle in the amount of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars for five-hundred Creech Street, and seventeen thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars for five-oh-two Creech Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a deed on behalf of the city of Goldsboro. Any questions?
Any questions? All right.
Item H, Seymour Johnson Air Force Base Fitness Center addition, construction budget amendment. The city of Goldsboro and the U.S. Air Force signed a lease for the construction of a sixty-two-acre multi-sports complex in exchange for the twenty-year lease. The city will construct a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot addition to the existing fitness center at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. On June twenty-sixth, city council approved and awarded the design bill, construction of the fitness center expansion to Daniels and Daniels in an amount of six-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. Per the lease agreement, the city is required to contribute six-hundred thousand dollars towards the construction of the fitness center. Since the revisions requested by the base increased the cost of the amount allocated by the city, the base has agreed to reimburse the excess cost of forty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. It is recommended the city council adopt the attached ordinance appropriating the necessary funding for the construction of the fitness center at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and then we will be reimbursed that forty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. Any questions?
Mayor, city council.
Good evening, sir.
Item I, informal bid request for abatement and demolition of condemned properties. On Monday, July seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, in accordance with the provision of North Carolina general statutes, sealed bids was publicly open for the abatement and demolition of twenty-two properties which are listed below. You should have a copy of it in your packet, as well as a bid tally sheet. The bids have been reviewed by the city inspection department, checked for accuracy, and found to be in order. The low bidder from A and K Grading and Demolition is being recommended in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, nine-hundred. The current fiscal year's budget has sufficient funding for abatement and demolition of these twenty-two locations. It is recommended that the council by motion accept the bid of one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, nine-hundred from A and K Grading and Demolition for the abatement and demolition of condemned properties.
Any questions?
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Alan.
Mayor, city council, I have item J, the contract award for the two thousand and seventeen street paving improvements project, which formerly known as Humphrey Street from Fourth Street to Eighth Street, and also Dakota from Fourth Street. And I can't remember the name of the other street. It includes that as well. July thirty-first, we opened bids. We had three sealed bids. Those are listed here. Barn Hill Contracting Company submitted the low bid for the project in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. We reviewed the bids, checked for accuracy. Everything found to be in order. We reviewed the financing of the project with finance director and determined that funding is partially available from street bonds and will require a budget amendment. Staff recommends city council by motion adopt the attached budget ordinance appropriating funds for the two thousand and seventeen street paving improvements project. And number two, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents with Barn Hill Contracting Company for the two thousand and seventeen street paving improvements project.
Any questions?
Yeah, what's the partial amount that we need to?
Ah, I don't have that number.
We do.
I'm hoping Kay would be here.
Seventy-five thousand.
We had seventy-five thousand.
Kay, the recommendation, what we've asked you to do is consider seventy-five thousand from the general fund. It's just we didn't move last year's money into this year, so it fell out. It's back in the budget. It's re-appropriating that money. Balance is to be paid with the street bonds that we sold this spring.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you, Marty.
Item K?
Good evening, mayor and city council.
Good evening.
I'm here before you this evening for item K, which is the bid award for installation of picnic shelters at Minewell Park. Back in October of two thousand and fifteen, we were awarded a Parks Recreation Trust Fund grant, or a part-of grant. And part of that grant is for us to be able to install new picnic shelters in Minewell Park. So on July twentieth, we opened up informal bids, and the low bidder was Barnacle Construction Incorporated. and the low bidder was Barnacle Construction Incorporated with a bid of forty-two thousand four hundred dollars. So the recommendation is by motion to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract in the amount of forty-two thousand four hundred dollars with Barnacle Construction Incorporated to install two picnic shelters at Minewell Park.
Please, I don't know if you know this, are these the same shelters we are building in the other parks? Because it just seems cheaper than what?
It's a smaller sized shelter. Mm-hmm. The, it's the exact same model brand that we built at both Stony Creek as well as at, um-
Berkeley?
Berkeley Park. But it's just a smaller shelter.
And we're just building smaller because of the man, just, that's what the demand is in that park?
Right. Because when we went through and did the master plan, uh, when we held the stakeholder meetings and met with the public, the one large shelter we had there, uh, people liked, but it only meant, what, what it meant was just one group could pretty much be there at one time. And from what I saw, rarely did they fill up that large shelter. So instead, it go to two smaller shelters. But when I say smaller shelter, just still gonna be able to hold about fifty people. So we're still getting the one hundred. We're just splitting it up.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Item M, the consent agenda, Fairview Color Run Street Closing Request. Goldsboro Housing Authority is seeking a permit to close certain city streets so that the Fairview Color Run can take place on August seventh, two thousand seventeen, from eleven AM to one PM. Due to the logistics of the color run and to keep attendees safe, the Goldsboro Housing Authority's request to closing of Edgerton Street from Claiborne Street to Fairview Circle from ten AM to two PM on August seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. All vendors, booths, entertainment attractions, and displays will be arranged to secure proper access to all fire hydrants, alleyways and driveways, and the permit is contingent upon receipt of liability insurance. As with all events, affected city departments will be notified or contacted, and fallen concerns are to be addressed. All intersections remain open for police department traffic control. Fourteen-foot fire lane is to be maintained in the center of the street to provide access for fire and emergency vehicles. All activities, change in plans, et cetera, will be coordinated with the police department, and police, fire, and public works departments are to be involved in the logistical aspects of the event. Recommendation by motion, grant the requested temporary closing of Edgerton Street from Claiborne Street to Fairview Circle from ten AM to two PM on August seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Question?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Mayor, uh, item N is the adoption of a supplement of the Code of Ordinances of, of Goldsboro, North Carolina. In nineteen ninety, an agreement was reached between the legal municipalities in the city of Goldsboro to engage American Legal Publishing Company to revise our Code of Ordinances. The revised code was published in nineteen ninety-five. The agreement stated American Legal Publishing Company would prepare supplements for the incorporation of new ordinance into the city Code of Ordinances on a recurring basis, and I think we do this about twice a year. In compliance with this agreement, the city has received, uh, the S dash forty supplement. The supplement contains all ordinance of a general nature enacted since S thirty-nine Code of Ordinances dated December fifth, two thousand sixteen. And the recommendation is by motion, adopt the attached ordinance enacting and adopting the two thousand seventeen S dash forty supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Goldsboro.
Where are?
Any questions?
Yes. Have you sent those to us, the changes?
Those ordinance over time, we, you have seen them probably through the minutes over time. We have not got them attached to this agenda item.
Okay, well, I, um, can we hold off on this until I see those?
Sure.
Thank you.
You need to make a motion to take that off.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to take off item M from the agenda.
Any discussion? All say please, right hand? Oppose saying? We've removed item M for the agenda from the consent agenda. With that, we've been through the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we adopt consent agenda items B through L.
Any discussion?
Yes. I know in our work session, we never went over the boards and commission discussion.
We moved it to, this up in the work session, we're gonna move it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, okay, so we got items V through L for approval? And there was a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? Oh, is the roll call vote?
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tim Boss?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Ham?
Yes.
Councilmember A. Todd?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. Uh, items requiring individual action, we only had one, and we've already taken care of that. City manager's report.
Mayor, I have two quick, I'll say quick items, two introductions and I have department head positions that I'd like to recognize. First, I'd like to ask Rick Fletcher if he would step forward. Uh, I'd like to share that I did select Rick Fletcher as our Director of Public Works for the city of Goldsboro effective March twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. I hope most of you knew that, I think I shared that, I just had not recognized him in the public forum. He replaced Jose Martinez, who resigned last fall. Uh, in addition, Karen Rashir, our Public Utilities Director, retired last fall, and we've placed the operation of these facilities under the Director of Public Works as well. So to cle- to clarify, we had two department heads and two deputy directors. With Rick's promotion, we have one department head and two deputy director, or a reduction of a department head level position. I want to apologize to Rick for the delay, publicly recognizing. We have tired a number of times to schedule this event over the past several months, and for, between his schedule and mine, we just haven't made it work out. Uh, Rick had the opportunity to serve as our interim director shortly after Hurricane Matthew passed to our community. I would say he did an outstanding job working with our staff to respond to the flooding in the months following the storm to get our community cleaned up. Uh, I'm always looking for the best candidates to fill any job opening with the city, and I'm pleased that in this case, we had someone in-house who I believe proved he was the best candidate for this position. We received twenty-nine applications for the positions. Randy Guthrie, Assistant City Manager, and I interviewed five candidates, each of which had a structured interview, an oral presentation, and a writing assignment, and Rick was by far our obvious choice. Rick grew up around Charlottesville, Virginia, uh, but has been a resident of Wayne County for the past ten years. And after graduating from Orange County High School in Virginia, he joined the US Air Force, completing a twenty-seven year career. During this time, he participated in a variety of public works functions for various air force installations, in addition to earning a BS degree in electrical engineering from NC State University, and a master's degree in engineering management from the Air Force Institute of Technology. Rick has over thirty years of experience, much of that within the public works field. Upon his, upon his retirement from the air force, he came to work for the city as our Building Maintenance Superintendent in two thousand and thirteen, was promoted to our Deputy Director of Public Works in January two thousand and sixteen. And I will say during with time with the city, we have been able to see him progress, and I'm very pleased with his work ethic and approach to problem solving. Uh, this time again, I would like to publicly congratulate Rick. I've enjoyed working with, closely with him these past ten months or so, and would offer him the opportunity to say a few words if he would so choose.
Been a privilege to work with the cities, um, definitely a privilege to step up and serve in the capacity of a public works director. Um, I see myself as a servant to the city and the citizens of Goldsboro, just as if I served in the, I, just as I served in the air force. Um, this is my career now. I, I work with some incredible, incredible, um, men and women out at the public works department. Get a lot of stuff done, maybe not everything, but there's a lot to get done.
You're doing a lot of good stuff.
With the staff and the funding, I think they do an incredible job, and I'm very proud to work side by side with them and represent them. Um, and I look forward to what we can hopefully accomplish over the next few years and five, maybe ten years. I take it as a challenge, and I look forward to working with all of them.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Congratulations.
And while, while he's going by, I've had the occasion over the last couple of months to have to contact Rick about requests from citizens in my district, and he's stepped to the plate every single time, even though I've worried him a little bit.
You don't worry.
But he's, he's always done it in a timely manner, and I appreciate it, and the citizens of my district appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Hold on a second, let me add to that too. I ran into Rick Saturday at Lowe's with my list. And it wasn't intentional, it hadn't been planned, but, uh, we just happened to run into each other, and so I, uh, I unloaded on him, and he was taking notes, and, uh, he, uh, I apologized. He said, you know, he's on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and this is out of tune.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Council, our next department head has asked to come forward. I, I would like to announce tonight that I've selected Bernadette Carter-Dove as our next Human Resources Director for the city of Goldsboro. She had an effective date of August first, so last week she came to work, and she's still here almost a week later.
That's good.
Uh, replacing Fay Kavanaugh, who resigned last January. You know, as I said earlier, I'm always looking for the best candidate to fill any job opening within the city. I think that's part of what we all need to be doing. And I believe Bernadette to be an excellent hire for the city of Goldsboro, or actually a rehire. Uh, she has over twenty years of human resources experience and comes to us with outstanding references. I couldn't, the folks I talked to couldn't tell me enough good things about Bernadette. So they either trying to run her off, or she really is that good, and I believe she really is that good.
Thank you.
We received ninety applications for the position with candidates from multiple states. Um, Ms. Angel Wright Lanier, our former Assistant City Manager, and I interviewed five candidates, each of which, again, had a structured interview, an oral presentation, and a writing assignment. And again, Bernadette was certainly the clear frontrunner in our interviews. Bernadette grew up around Burlington, uh, she's been a resident of Wayne County since the early nineteen nineties, so she knows Goldsboro and Wayne County. After graduating from Graham High School, she completed her BA degree in sociology from Elon University, and her master of public administration from NC Central University. She worked for the city of Goldsboro, as I alluded to earlier, as an HR analyst from nineteen ninety-four till two thousand, served as our interim Human Resources Director in the two thousand timeframe for a short period of time. After she left us, she served as the HR Director for Green County Healthcare from two thousand and three to two thousand and twelve, and comes to us after serving as the HR Director for Johnston Community College for the past five years. And in her interview with the News Argus, she said local government's her favorite, so I just smiled a little more as I was sitting with her during that. After our initial meeting last Tuesday, during which I shared some of the areas I'd like her to focus upon, I've not seen much of her due to my schedule. I have had reports, again, which pleased me, that she's been making her rounds throughout the workforce to say hello to some of those who worked with her before, and to get to know the rest of our employees. And I think that's important for HR Director to be known by, by our employees, so she'll spend more time out in the departments trying to get to know our employees. At this time, I would like to congratulate Bernadette and welcome her to back to the city of Goldsboro. I look forward to working with her, and would offer her the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Scott, Mayor, City Council. Um, first, I'd like to thank Scott for giving me the opportunity to return to the city of Goldsboro. I came here exactly twenty-five years ago this month. I think, um, Mayor Allen was, was fairly new, um, on the board.
A mere child.
Yeah, I was too. Um, so after being gone seventeen years, I am proud to be back. Um, I have been out trying to reconnect with, with, um, some of my former family, coworkers here. It is a great staff. Thank you for just allowing me to come back. It's been a, a strong, strong, warm welcome from the leadership team and your awesome staff. So my goal here is to work with you all as closely as I can, and to be a strong advocate for our employees.
Thank you. Welcome back, we're glad to have you back.
Welcome and thank you. Mayor, the only one I'm having, if you have time, I do have a closed session I'd like to share with you after your meeting. Again, if you could do that this evening, fine, if you need to defer that, we could defer.
Okay. Do report. Uh, so we'll go to Mayor and Councilman reports, and we'll start with Jacob.
Just like to thank the scouts for being here tonight, and, uh, you live by that scout oath and that law, and you always do the right thing, believe me. Thank you for coming.
Miss Ham? Mr. Ross?
I have to mention, mention Ms. Virginia Durrell, that's right? Yes, uh, me and, uh, myself and Antonio, uh, Councilman Williams, we went out to her hundredth birthday, and it was a, it was a great thing, you know, I mean, to, to, to witness someone that's lived a hundred years. You know, it's not often you get a chance to do that. Uh, she's a lovely lady, lovely family, uh, myself and Antonio, we got chewed out at the door 'cause we weren't there on time, and we didn't come to her birthday party, but we were, we weren't told about it. So, you know, we showed up when we were told, and, you know, we were happy to be there, but, you know, uh, the city did a great job of, uh, um, wishing her a happy birthday, you know, and with the police, the fire, and everything, you know, I just wish that, you know, myself and Councilman Williams would have known at that time, so we would have been there because we wouldn't have got in trouble. But we thank you, that's it.
Yeah. Mark?
I also don't know where to begin. Um, I will speak on current events, I guess. And for those who are, I guess, that were disappointed in the situation with the brunch bill and the brunch ordinance passing, I just, you know, keep praying, keep striving, keep going, and doing the things that you know is right, and you should be all right. I do believe the Lord will follow you and keep you safe for the rest of the days of your life. As far as other events that are currently going on in our city, uh, we sh- I guess, they will plague our lives for the rest of our lives, but we should, as all citizens, stay very positive in knowing that there are other things out there, and there's things that I am privy of, and knowing that can come and will be very positive for all mankind and all womankind that will spread in like a wildfire and bring you new jobs, new outlets for manufacturing, technology, pharmaceuticals, and will be a domino effect to help each and every citizen in this county and city. If you just call me, my office is on seven fifteen Semestry, or you can call my number, which is five eight four five zero seven zero. And I can tell you, I do know that I have infrastructure that will allow everyone as further as Calypso, all the way to Fremont, to have the fastest speed internet and be able to allow these manufacturing companies to come into this area that will bring several amounts of new jobs and things that way, that will help you diminish the unemployment rate. And I just hope that with the sitting council that we have now, uh, that we will collectively work together and try to make these things possible for each and every citizen, both the city and the county, with the county commissioners' help. And then, finally, for everyone who is worried about the education and the well-being of our young ones. Houseman Williams, and I don't always see the eye to eye, we always seem to sometimes butt heads. But I am strictly with him on this topic of twenty-four hours apiece. And if we can find a way to, or it will be reasonable, and we can afford to do it, and we can make these things happen, then I will back him with this and help him in regards to fostering this situation where we'll have twenty-four hours apiece, and help these young ones understand beyond twenty-four hours apiece that we can grow, we can change, and we can better ourselves. And that's not just one race, class, creed, religion, sexual orientation of people. This is all mankind, both black, white, Hispanic, Asian, and the like. So that's where I am, and so I, I wish you all good evening.
Thank you.
I have two things. One is I want to thank Apostle Von Newsome and Impact Church and the ladies. They had a wonderful luncheon for us, uh, last week, and, uh, they went to a lot of trouble, and they're right here, and I really appreciate what they did. They, they went to a lot of trouble, and I appreciate it. Now, the last, last thing I have is, my ears perked up at Troop fourteen. I was, uh, in Troop fourteen, probably before they printed Scout Handbook, not really, but, uh, I know I got an eagle in nineteen fifty-nine, so you can tell how old I am, but, uh, when I heard Troop fourteen, it brought warm things to my heart. Thank you guys for coming.
Mr. Williams? That's all.
Today was a great day, we got a chance to, um, greet the, the young people going to the high school today. Um, thank you, Mark Colbrook, for organizing that, we really appreciate that. Just seeing the smiles and the positive energy, I mean, it's amazing, that's what we need. We need to continue just letting the kids know we're proud of them, you know, be there, show them, hey, it's okay to go to school, it's okay to be a nerd. Um, that was amazing. Also want to thank, uh, Ms. Virginia Durrell and her family for welcoming us, and they fed us too. Um, so, you know, she had a great birthday, all of the family looked young. I mean, that's why she made it to a hundred, the DNA is just amazing. And I also want to thank, um, all the partners that came out today as well at the school, the police department, the mayor, um, just the, the local citizens that came out and greeted the kids. And, I mean, you should have seen, they were just so happy, just knowing somebody cared about them. And last but not least, the summer youth program, I'm just, I'm proud of the summer youth program. I'm glad that, you know, that the city got on board with that, I'm glad that, you know, that, uh, all of the businesses got on board with that, excuse my voice. I mean, we, we have to keep it going, next year, we have to make sure that it's better. Um, it just can get better. Thank you so much, that's it.
I have a few things too. Um, one, I just want to, uh, thank all the law enforcement, and all the folks who responsible for our national night out we had back in first of August. It was a great event, had a lot of really good participation, a lot of the council members were there, all kinds of things, so that's important, you know, and that is to build a relationship between communities and law enforcement. And we really need to work on that every day, not once a year, but we are doing a lot of that. I know we do a lot of community police now, and we're continuing to try to figure out ways to get out of the community. So, but I do want to thank all the people who put that event on, it was a very good event, a beautiful night. Secondly, we just had the Purple Heart, uh, the Councilman of Wallwee went to the Purple Heart event for us, and it was our representative there, and Mr. Ham went, and so I appreciate their doing that. And by all accounts, that was a really good event, so, um, I appreciate that. Uh, following up on what Councilman Williams said, and Mark on Goldsboro High School, that was great this morning, it was rainy. But there were a lot of kids that were really smiling. There were a lot of kids that were really smiling, and they're like, what are these crazy people doing out here? But it was good, and they really, I think they appreciated us being there. I will tell you, there are a lot of eyes on Goldsboro High School, and there are a lot of people determined to make Goldsboro High School, and the kids there are very successful. And I think you'll get a lot of attention this year, and I think they're going to have a great year at Goldsboro High School. So I think it's a good time to be there, whether you're a student or faculty. So I'm excited about what's coming up there. I do want to kind of comment on what Councilman Foster said about Ms. Gerald. We did get invited to Ms. Gerald's party, and when I went over there, she already, she's lived in this house sixty-something years, and she's a pretty classy lady. And when I got there, I saw her, the name of the street's Gerald Street, and she goes, I said, well, Ms. Gerald, we've already named the street out for you, after you, so I don't know what else we can do for you. So she thought that was okay, but she was really, really sweet. That was a good, good thing. So appreciate being a part of that. And I had the summer youth program on my list of things to talk about as well, Councilman Williams. And I do want to say, I think that's been a great program. I think that we get more business participation this coming year. I've heard a lot of good feedback from the public. The base was, the base was really pleased with the people we put there, that they had there. So hopefully, we'll be able to grow that and work that even better next year, as you indicated. Was able to go to the Ribbon Cut Day at Tropo Smoothie on Berkeley Boulevard. If you like smoothies, they are good. So I just encourage anybody to go there if you haven't been, always to support our new business. And then the last thing I just got to say is there's still a lot of litter in our city. We're doing a lot, but we can't do it by ourselves. We really need community engagement. We're going to meet and get more ideas, but we need, we need our citizens to understand it's not okay to litter. I was in the grand on Day Circle this Saturday night, and there was more litter out there than I've ever seen in any one place. I don't understand it. I don't care if you're black, white, rich, or poor. You don't have to litter. So I do, as a community, realize that we need to work on this littering, and I hope our folks will convey that message. Anything else?
Just a closed session, Mr. Mayor.
I need a motion to go into closed session for...
Potential litigation.
I make a motion to go into closed session for potential litigation.
Second. All papers are out. Motion carries, and we're going, juror to go into closed session. Thank all of you for coming tonight.